I call to order the Catawba County Board of Education regular meeting for March 24th, 2025. We will start with a moment of silence and in presentation of colors followed by the pledge of allegiance by Don Sigmund. So if you'd please stand, moment of silence. We'll now have presentation of colors. Thank you, Major Jones. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your cadets you have with us this evening?
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you for coming and allowing us to present the colors tonight. I have a larger crowd up here than normally. It's great to have so many volunteers. And I have a few seniors that I like to recognize also as we go through the, from left to right. I have Samara Chavez. She is presently going to, she's going to be graduating. She was last year, she was our junior marshal, excuse me. She is an undergraduate this year and she will be going to CBCC and then to High Point University to do an ROTC program. Next is Emily Foster. She is a junior this year. So I get to talk more about her next year. So I'll hold off on her. And then the next one, carrying the North Carolina flag is Ruby Fox. She's also a senior and she is enlisting into the Air Force as soon as we graduate in just a couple of weeks. Next, carrying the Air Force flag is our freshman Isabel Cass. And then beside him, beside her is Dakota Martin, who is a sophomore. And finally, on the end here is our last senior, Christian Cheryl, who is going to be going to CBCC and potentially off to a ROTC program as well. So all of these cadets here have participated in the color guards and are the, what I call my cream of the crop. Recently, they were a color guard for the Charlotte Hornets. So I'm very proud of them.
Thank you again to the Bunker Hill Air Force JRC and Major Jones. Next up, we have approval of minutes from the February 24th, 2025 meeting and March 17th, 2025 meeting. I believe everyone's had a chance to look over the minutes. If there's any discussion on that, I need a motion to approve. Approve.
My second.
How about a motion and a second? Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in approval shall have raised hand. That's unanimous. Next up will be adjustment approval of the agenda. We have two additions for the agenda and one removal from the agenda. The first addition will be deletion of administrative procedure 4.200 AP and of course, exam exemptions. Second addition will be after closed session, consideration and possible approval of letter regarding power school request by Ms. Teague. And a removal from the agenda will be 4.2320, school administrations, multiple policies requested by Attorney Davis. Is there any other adjustments that need to be made to the agenda? Yes, thank you. If there are no other adjustments or deletions from the agenda, I need a motion for approval.
Make a motion, we approve.
Hearing the motion and the second, is there any further discussion?
I do have a question. I know that, I know in the past, Mr. Selmeyer, you've been a real stickler for us having things on the agenda that have been in front of us and that we've had a chance to look at and consider. I think, I'm not sure about the letter regarding power school being added. We didn't receive it until Saturday morning at 8:30 to look at. I wonder if we're not premature in adding that to the agenda until we can discuss it in closed session.
Okay, I think we could go ahead and then listen to what the attorney has to say in close session.
Oh, yes, definitely. We need that discussion.
Have further discussion after that if need be. I know it wasn't until Saturday until I got in and was able to sit down. I know it's short notice, but we'll just hear it out and then we can talk about those two times.
And we can't discuss it in closed session without it being on the agenda? I think it's a good idea to discuss it. I think we need that with our attorney. I'm just not sure that I'm ready for consideration and possible approval. I'd like to suggest that we wait to see to adjust the agenda then, once we have the information.
Okay, so the approval of the agenda right now is just going to be for number one and number two of the adjustments, which would be the 4.200 and the 4.2320. Then we'll have a pending for after closed session. That'd be okay for a motion? Okay. We need to second that as well.
I'm in my motion until after the closed session.
To adjust the approval of the agenda by adding number one and two. And then after closed session, the board can determine what they want to do.
I'm second.
Okay, alright.
Hearing the motion and the second, is there any further discussion? Not, raise hand for approval. That is unanimous. Next up will be the superintendent's report presented by Dr. Stover.
Thank you, Chairman and members of the board. If you want to meet me out front, we've got three special people to recognize this evening. Alright, I also want to welcome Mr. Chris Geddes. If you want to come up and join us for Homes For Here, we appreciate your sponsorship of our monthly awards. So this month, we've got three employees to recognize. Our first employee we're going to recognize tonight is Ms. Kim Heckler. She's our assistant principal and online Catawba administrator. And recently, she's also been filling in our gap at Mill Creek Middle School with Mr. Everett. And I was just down there the other day and the staff is so thankful and appreciative of her. And thank you to Ms. Hall for being here tonight and letting us borrow her. But great job with online Catawba and all you do. We're super proud of you. Thank you, Ms. Heckler. We've got a plaque for you. Come on up. Our next employee of the month, we're going to recognize from Charles Ford Elementary School. This is a third grade teacher, Ms. Hensley. She has come to us a few years ago from Charlotte Meck. We appreciate her crossing the line and grateful for her to be here. We also have her mom in technology too. Thanks for her parents for being here tonight, Mrs. Gates. When I went to her class, it was obvious why we chose her. Her eyes lit up and her demeanor with her kids and what she does with those students. And when the kids saw us coming and saw that she won the award, it spoke volumes of what she does every day in her classroom. So we'd like to recognize Ms. Hensley. Come on up. And last but not least, we got to keep our children well fed. And this, this month, we're recognizing Ms. Denise Caldwell from Murray Elementary School. I see Ms. Garcia and our school counselor here and we're just so thankful for all you do. Our child nutrition staff works so hard, you all know that. But along with that, the food allergies are just through the roof, you know? And so she just does this great job making sure our kids are getting what they're allowed to have, what they're not allowed to have. She also grows strawberries behind the school. That's our little joke. She had great strawberries one day. I said, where'd you get this? She's, I grow them. I said, okay, wow. But Ms. Caldwell does a great job and I know that the staff at Murray just love having her there. So congratulations. Come on up.
Next up, we have public comment and that will be directed by Clayton Mullis.
The Catawba County Board of Education appreciates and welcomes all public comments. Members of the public who have signed up to speak may address board members on any topic of concern during the public comment section of a regular meeting. Each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes to address the Catawba County Board of Education members. A time clock will be displayed to assist each speaker with their three minutes of time limit. Speakers should direct comments to board members rather than to the audience. Comments by members of the public should be respectful without slander towards any other member of the public community, member or members of the Catawba County Board of Education. Any displays of approval or disapproval are out of order unless otherwise directed by the board chair. On our public comments, first will be Matt Sin.
Good evening. Thank you, board and fellow citizens for giving me the opportunity to speak. Thank you to all the students, teachers, administrators and the board for all your hard work with helping public education. So it's March, basketball season. Everybody has their favorite teams, you know, glued to the TV, internet, trying to find out what's going on. Everybody's got their favorite colleges, whether or not they went there. Well, I'm here to speak about another kind of madness. I'm Matt Sin. I was born and raised in North Carolina and educated in public schools throughout. I'd like to begin by reading a quote from the Woke Project 2025. In chapter 11, the first sentence says, "Federal education policy should be limited and ultimately, the Federal Department of Education should be eliminated." So what we see is this term, Department of Education is being eliminated. So don't think that the rest of Project 2025 is not going to be implemented and here to weaken local public schools. The Department of Education was not preventing states from fully funding schools or paying teachers more. What we lose is the ability for consistent education policy without a national education agenda. I'd like to illustrate with an example from the Federal Highway Administration. It costs millions of dollars to build these overpasses and every half a foot can cost millions of dollars. With deregulation, it's a race to the bottom. Some states to save money won't build as high. Therefore, existing trucks may not be able to pass under, in some states, although it's more efficient. What this means for students' parents is more unequal education outcomes. For teachers, your experience may be less valued if you move to another state. For example, math teachers may only be able to teach one to two grades lower in another state and paid less. Now that the Department of Education is gone, are states going to suddenly make education a priority? I hope so. We must tell representatives to prove that the Department of Education was what was holding them back and fulfill their promises or else. I'd like to remind you, quote from Matthew 1924. Jesus Christ said, "It's easier for a camel to walk through the eye of a needle than a rich man to enter the kingdom of heaven." Remember that when you think about who is leading us where and whether that's the place you want to follow. We are tar heels, okay? That means we stick to our heels and we won't back down. We must protect public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sin. Next speaker is Lynn, is it Dorfin?
Thank you for this opportunity. I'm Lynn Dorfman. I live in Hickory. I'm a Catawba County taxpayer. My husband and I retired to Catawba County in 2013 after a 40-year career in Washington, DC. My first job after library school was at the Council for Exceptional Children. Most people use the term exceptional to mean outstanding, but it means not the norm or atypical. Exceptional children can be those with physical, mental or emotional challenges, but are also those who are gifted and talented. The Catawba County Schools website says in part, quote, "Catawba County Schools is committed to providing exceptional children with a personalized, inclusive educational experience that meets their unique needs. With an emphasis on lifelong learning, independence and accessibility, Catawba County Schools is dedicated to helping exceptional children succeed both in school and beyond." Okay, but how will Catawba County Schools honor this commitment with the loss of federal funds provided through the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act? Will there be enough educators to provide services for disabled children? Who will develop individualized education programs? Who will implement them? Who will monitor children's progress? My husband and I were fortunate. We did not have a child with Down Syndrome or autism or cerebral palsy or with emotional challenges or learning difficulties. But other parents, many of our friends and many of you and your friends too, were and are the ones scrambling and scouring for resources to help their children get the education, the tools, the resources, the training, the aid that they need to be able to live their best lives. Live their best lives. That's the goal of education, helping equip the next generation to live their best lives. Catawba County Schools has received about $9 million a year in federal funds for special needs students, for low-income students, for help with ESL, for hiring instructional coaches and aides and so much more. Geez, it may be time for bake sales to offset those serious shortfalls. How many cookies does it take to reach $9 million? These are challenging times, as Mr. Sin said, and you as school board members must rise to the challenge. I thank you for what you are doing and what you will do to help all children succeed. To engage, to inspire, to empower, to live their best lives.
Thank you, Ms. Dorfin. Next speaker is Erin Schermeyer.
So good evening. I'm Erin Schermeyer. First of all, I want to send some congratulations to some of our students and educators. I would like to congratulate our Battle of the Books teams that won in the district level competitions and are moving on to the regional competitions. As a student through, from sixth through eighth grade, I myself participated in Battle of the Books and know exactly what a time commitment it is to read all of those books and become an expert on them, know them front and back. And it is a huge time commitment for their coaches too. So I would like to send them a huge congratulations. It's also Arts in Schools Month and I've loved seeing the posts on the county Facebook page highlighting our wonderful arts educators, both visual arts and performing arts. I loved seeing the artwork of the kids coming in. It was heartwarming to see it. And I would like to encourage the board to try to promote and include more arts education for our students. Every child deserves a place to succeed in school and for some kids, that place is arts. And it's important every kid can succeed. So I do, with the current federal administration, have some severe concerns for Catawba County Schools. One thing that is near and dear to my heart is making sure that hungry kids are fed. And I worry about that, that currently Catawba County Schools offers free and, actually free for lunch for students. And I would hate to see that go away. Every child deserves to be able to eat. It doesn't matter what their background is, what they look like, if they're having struggles at home, they need to eat. Hungry kids cannot learn. And if our kids can't learn, they're not going to be good citizens when they graduate. They're not going to be productive members of society. But I am truly upset to see that the federal program that was providing fresh fruits and vegetables to our students from local farmers has been dissolved. Fresh fruits and veggies for some of these students is something they're not going to get to experience at home because they live in food insecurity or in food deserts. And that's just not available. And I want to absolutely commend our wonderful school lunch person who is in that was growing her own strawberries. That's, that's amazing that these kids get to have fresh strawberries. They get to see where food comes from. And I would love to see more innovative ideas like that happening with our school lunch workers. They do amazing work and every child deserves to eat. School lunch debt should not exist. Those are words that just should not go together. And I can't fathom that we as a society allow that. And with the current federal push, I'm scared we're going to get back to that. So thank you and please do what you can to not have that.
Thank you, Ms. Schermeyer. Our next speaker is Kevin Sparks.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Kevin Sparks. I only have one agenda and I've spoken about that agenda for three years now in this room. My agenda is solely focused on excellence in public education. I am a product of the American education system. I'm unbelievably proud to say that here. I'm an American scientist. Those words used to carry great weight. Ask yourself, when was the last time you heard someone say that? Ask yourself if you want to hear a Catawba County student stand up and say, "I'm an American scientist." If you don't value that, exactly who will design the next generation of AI chips? And you better pray that it's Taiwan and not China. Enough proselytizing. Forty-three years ago, almost exactly, was the argument date in the United States Supreme Court for what has become known as Pico versus Board of Ed. It was actually Island Trees Free Union School District versus Pico. If you're not familiar with it, let me suggest that you get yourself familiar with it. The Board of Education in Escombia County, Florida, was not familiar with it. They are getting an extremely painful education in that case right now, speaking of unintended consequences. They hoped to ban books because of what they consider to be objectionable content. Does this sound familiar to anybody? What they've learned is that the federal court in which that case landed decided to open the door and strengthen the precedent of Pico versus Board of Ed, which was notable because it was held up, especially to me in some of my discussions, as a very weak precedent. It has now become central to the topic of First Amendment. Why do I care about First Amendment? The First University was formed in 749. It was the school of El Hayam in Fez, Morocco. Yeah, it was a Muslim school. One of their principles was free expression of ideas. Ever since, it has been central to education to have free expression of ideas. I have heard in this room, this board asked to speak to employees for speaking out against people. The horror and the shame of it. The Supreme Court said in their ruling, and the Burger Court, of course, "Public school libraries have a distinct affinity to the freedom of speech", verifying what some of us see as an important link in education between freedom of between freedom of thought and a sound education. I want our students to be immune to indoctrination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks. Next speaker is Kimberly Turk.
Thank you very much. I'm here this evening to give a big shout-out to Mr. Settlemeyer and Mr. Miller for volunteering all day at our most recent Science Olympiad tournament. As we were unpacking the Friday evening before the tournament, the directions for Mr. Settlemeyer's event basically said, "This event has been a nightmare. Good luck." Now, before some of you think the worst of me, I need you to know that Mr. Settlemeyer picked his event. I did not assign it to him. It was a new event, and sadly, one of the critical parts for this event arrived broken. We did our best to get it ready for him, and when he arrived Saturday morning, he still had quite a learning curve in front of him. In the end, the event ran very well, and many medals were awarded and trophies were handed out. Sadly, very few of those medals went to Cataba County students, and none of the awards were handed out to a Cataba County school. We did not have any middle schools that participated. The only Cataba County high school that participated did not field a full team, and therefore, they were not going to qualify for states. When my children attended Cataba County Schools, they attended the state competition both as students at Art Middle School, St. Stevens High School, and as students at Clyde Campbell Elementary. Clyde Campbell Elementary competed as a middle school when my son attended there. In the past, we have had multiple middle schools and high schools as part of this competition, and we used to have all of our elementary schools competing. Our elementary tournament no longer exists because the last time we ran it, we only had one school competing. Part of this loss was due to COVID, when the schools couldn't have clubs, and Science Olympiad became virtual. I still haven't gotten over having to cancel the national tournament that was supposed to happen in Raleigh. It has been two years of preparation for that, and it dissolved overnight. The majority of the decline in Science Olympiad regionally happened because 20 years ago, it was a CCS employee that ran the elementary tournament. She was able to use AIG funds to support the teachers and get them to participate so they did not have to do fundraisers. That support is gone, and teachers now have to find ways to fund this, and there are no stipends. I love robotics. Later this week, I'm gonna be babysitting the Mechanical Minds team. And those kids learn a lot more than just engineering, but they do not get as the breadth and the depth that Science Olympiad offers them. I hope that you can help work to fill this void.
Thank you, Dr. Turk. Last speaker is David Nields.
Good evening. My name's David Nields. I have 42 years' experience as an educator, and I've worked for Disney twice. Uh, I teach theater, and I really enjoy it. And first of all, I want to thank each one, every one of you for your service. I believe you all have our kids' interest at, at heart. Um, so, I, I want to tell you a story. A couple of years ago, I was directing a high school production of Alice in Wonderland. And I had split it up so that kids could come on different days, and they wouldn't have to commit to every afternoon. And I had one girl who played the Mock Turtle from Alice in Wonderland. She came on Tuesday. She came for a couple of weeks, and then she came to me and she said, "Mr. Nields, I'd like to switch my day to Thursday." And I said, "Sure. Is there a reason for that?" And she said, "Well, my mom gets paid on Wednesday, and that's when we put gas in the car." And, um, I realized that this is the kind of kid that we should be supporting. This is a kid who wanted to succeed, who didn't drop out because it was difficult. She continued to come and participate, uh, but she had to make adjustments. I feel like I've, this is my first time speaking here. I'm really delighted to be here. Uh, but I've been reading about the school board meetings since I've moved to Hickory. And, um, I feel like we should be refocusing our attention. And, um, not, I, I'm not allowed to look at the audience, I guess, but, um, hungry kids can't learn. And I think that we need to focus on the needs of the, of the students more than what's in our libraries. And, uh, I'd like to see a readjustment of that. Come to the schools, talk to the teachers, talk to the students, find out what the needs are that could best serve them. I've got a minute, but I'm not gonna use it. So, uh, thanks, everybody. Once again, my name's David Nields, and, uh, thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you for coming to speak tonight, and thank you for being the first to sign up online. Uh, next on the agenda are consent items presented by Dr. Stover.
Thank you, Chairman Settlemeyer, members of the board. We do have our consent items in your packets, and we are looking for approval of that this evening.
Everyone's had a chance to look over the consent items. Uh, I need a motion for approval of consent items for this evening's agenda.
A motion to approve the consent items on the agenda.
I've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a raise of hands for approval. That is unanimous. Uh, next up is new business. Uh, our first presentation is the first reading of the 2025 through 2028 academically or intellectually gifted AIG plan for Cataba County Schools by John L. Eisenhower.
I'll get my presentation somewhere. I sent it to Lee, so wherever Lee and you send things. Yes, it is. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, honored members of the board. Dr. Stover, thank you for having me this evening. I am John L. Eisenhower, and this is my 10th presentation of the AIG plan to our school board. The way the law works, which is Article 9B, says that our plan has to be rewritten and reviewed every three years. So we are that part in the cycle where I'm submitting it to y'all for first reading. The important things that I wanted to make sure that you knew, um, with regard to Article 9B, that's the, um, legislation that divorced AIG from exceptional children. So that separated the funding, and it separated how we serve. So, um, it requires that we address the standards. It requires that we legally have a procedure to resolve disagreements. All of that is in that 52-page document that we shared with you. Um, AIG is funded at 4%, 4% of our ADM. We serve at 12%, so we make the most out of the money that we have. Our program standards include identification, how do we identify students? Um, this is our stickiest standard because it's the one that if they're gonna take me to court, this is the one they're gonna take me to court on because Article 9B says that we must have standards to identify, and we must place and serve students. So far, so good. No judge, no anything. Got 28 solid years of plan, so, so far, so good. Each standard has multiple practices underneath it, and as I said, all of that is in your document. The revision process. The last time that we submitted a plan, I got information, we got information for, from DPI. So between what they said about our last plan, any changes to the standards, feedback from the advisory board and from focus groups, as well as standards teams. And y'all, standards teams are the groups of people that, um, each one focuses on a different standard, whether it's identification, replacement, or differentiation. It's just a lot for somebody to be able to do all six of those, so they're kind of separated out. So you have the first draft for the first reading, and there are two ways to go. You can read it, and then in April's meeting, you can say, "Great, it's fine, and we're gonna go ahead and authorize it," because it is your plan. Legally, the State Board of Education cannot tell you what to put in that plan. We have met all the requirements. They can recommend that we change things, but we don't have to. So when you approve it, it becomes law for us. If you read through it and you have questions, then, of course, I'll be here for that. I'll answer whatever questions you have, and then I'll give it, the plan, over to you for a second reading. And so hopefully, then, if that works out okay, then in May, you would actually approve it. But we work through it until we answer all of your questions. Questions from me. Okay, thank you so much for having me and for listening to me this evening, and be sure to let me know if you need something.
Thank you, Ms. Eisenhower. Next on the agenda is review of Cataba County education policies for board members. And that'll be directed by Dr. Barnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in January, uh, with the new board coming on, some new members of the board coming on, there were a few missteps that made me realize and think that what we really needed at this time was a review of some policies or some, a look at some policies, delving into some of our policies, just about procedures and the way things operate, according to what policies we passed. And I had mentioned to Chairman Settlemeyer that, uh, I had mentioned seven different policies that I thought would be good for us to look at a little bit more in depth. And, uh, so I, I kind of approached this, as I told him, as a scavenger hunt, uh, just the teacher in me, uh, doing that. But since there were seven of us on the board, I thought we could each take one of those seven policies and, uh, just kind of fill in the blanks. It's not meant, this is not to, meant to be a deep dive into policy. In fact, I think we need much more of this, to just get into what policies are already there and make sure we understand them and are operating according to them. Uh, but tonight, I, I chose seven particular ones, and I copied all of this to, uh, Mr. Settlemeyer also, so that he would know what we're doing. And I've given you each kind of a cheat sheet if you want to. You know your answers. If you want to record the answers that the others are giving tonight, you can do so on there, and, uh, that would help you review your policy as well as the person reviewing it for us. The first policy is Policy 1.0100 Board Authority and Duties. And I had asked, I just assigned this one to Mr. Settlemeyer, uh, asking, "What are the board's eight most important duties?" And I think he's got flashcards even.
I do.
Good for you.
He's just trying to. That's the.
It's the student in here.
Yeah. So the first one of these eight would be, uh, Sound Basic Education as per the North Carolina Supreme Court. Uh, the second one would be Leadership Direction by Goals, Defining High Academic Standards for Students. Uh, the third one would be Policies for Standards, Accountability, and Evaluate Essential Operations for the School System. Number four would be Ensure Legal Compliance of All the Board of Education and School System Functions. Fifth would be Official Functions by Hearing as Appropriate or Required by Law Regarding Decisions of the School System. Number six would be Hiring a Superintendent, Supporting the Superintendent and His or Her Administration, Evaluating and Responding to Recommendations by the Superintendent, Including Educational and Facility Needs. Number seven, we would Consider the Budget Proposed by the Superintendent, Present that Budget to the County Commissioners, Adopting the Budget if Approved by the County Commissioners, and Ensuring Appropriations is Sufficient to Support a System of Free Public Education. And finally, number eight, Advocate for the School System, Its Employees, and Especially its Students in All Interactions with the, with Government Entities and the Public.
Thank you, Mr. Settlemeyer. So we have a lot of duties, uh, before us, and as, uh, Mr. Seigman was saying, there's just, uh, it's almost impossible to be responsible for all of those, but we have a huge responsibility. Uh, when we were elected, we were really elected to do some heavy lifting for our students, for our district, for our teachers and community, and it's very important. And Mr. Settlemeyer, you did a great job. I had mentioned in there, tried to summarize your answers using as few words as possible, and you certainly did. Thank you for doing that. Anything you want to comment on those duties?
Like you said, it's a lot of heavy lifting in there, a lot of weight on those things.
Thank you. And number two, Ms. Underwood. Uh, she was looking at Policy 1.1000. And by the way, I hope everybody knows where to get to the policies online and that you can follow along and look at them. Like, like I told Mr. Settlemeyer when I sent these out, it wasn't any kind of gotcha or any kind of, uh, uh, trick questions. It's just basically fill in the blanks from the policies themselves, just a chance to get us in there and get us reading them and looking at them. So Ms. Underwood's going to talk to us about the seven big governing principles in Policy 1.1000 Governing Principles.
All right. Number one is student success. As its top priority, a system of excellent schools provides opportunities for individual students to succeed and overall student performance to improve. Number two is parental involvement. A system of excellent schools involves parents in decisions regarding their own children and educational program and the schools. Number three is safe, orderly, and inviting, inviting environment. A system of excellent schools creates and maintains a safe and orderly environment in which staff and students are focused on and excited about learning. Number four, school initiatives. In a system of excellent schools, each school initiates improvements to the educational program and services for students and involves staff, parents, and students in the school-level decision-making processes. Number five, professional development. A system of excellent schools provides continuous professional development and training to help personnel gain the skills and knowledge needed to meet the North Carolina State Board and Local Board expectations, especially as they relate to improving student performance. Number six is removal of barriers. A si, a system of excellent schools prohibits illegal discrimination and harassment of staff and students, encourages tolerance and respect, and seeks to eliminate and lessen other barriers that may impede a student's ability or opportunity to learn, including economic disadvantages, poor nutrition, ill health, and lack of transportation. Number seven is stewardship of resources. A system of excellent schools conserves financial and environmental resources and operates in an efficient manner. Uh, Dr. Barnett, as I read all of those, um, I think all of those are very important, but two of them really stuck out to me, and, and that was number two and number three. Um, safe, orderly, and inviting environment. Um, if our kids and our staff don't have a safe environment and don't feel like, um, they are safe, and if they're hungry, as we have heard already tonight, um, that's gonna hurt their student success. Um, and the other thing, the parental involvement, number two. Um, personally, I would love for our board to work together, uh, in the time that we are together, um, on improving some of those things and coming up with more resources for our kids and for our staff, um, in regards to safety, and, um, also find ways to get our parents more involved because I believe that, um, it takes all of us to, um, make sure that our kids are gonna be successful.
Thank you. I certainly agree with that, too. In this policy and in the one that Mr. Settlemeyer went over, the Leandro case is also mentioned, and, uh, that's, uh, you know, been adjudicated, but it's never been, uh, it never followed, the funds have never followed with it. So even though we refer to that, it's something that we're still, you know, got our fingers crossed about with Leandro. And I agree with you, as it's mentioned in here, that we have, we, we govern by policies. We make policies that, uh, we, that we govern by. But we have certain principles that we want to know are behind what policies we make. We don't just do it capriciously. And as you mentioned, as we heard from some of our public tonight, we heard about children who are hungry or, uh, you know, needs. It's that Maslow hierarchy of needs, isn't it, of being hungry or being safe? That those things have to come first. So some of these principles could even be, uh, prioritized, couldn't they? I mean, we have it in our. I mean, we have it in our policies, but they could be prioritized. Thank you. The third one is from Policy 2.00000, operational goals of the board. And I asked Ms. Tig if she would share who are the four groups to whom the board is accountable.
Yes, Ms. Barnett, the four groups that we are accountable to. One is citizens, number two is staff, number three is parents, and number four is students. The last thing. Policy of how. 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 How.
Yes, so we strive for that transparency in what we do and that we have a large constituency, don't we? We have our students, our teachers that we work with on a regular basis, but the citizens and our parents are also part of that constituency that we're accountable to. And that's the reason for our public comments as well. Thank you, Ms. Tig. Anything else you wanted to comment on that policy?
The thing I wanted to say is that with the policies in place, we, those are put in place and we do have to follow the laws that go along with the policies. So I just wanted to mention that as well.
Right, our policies have to be based on law. Number four, I asked Mr. Sigmund if he would look at Policy 2.1000 Board Member Legal Status. Sometimes we have a tendency out in the public to have people come up to us and want us to do things or ask us things, that sort of thing. You have to, those we just talked about, we're accountable to those constituencies. But actually, this board policy tells us what our legal status is. And Mr. Sigmund, you looked at it.
Yes, I did. They basically says that we cannot act on our own, we must act as a board, legally in session. If anyone makes a statement or any individual from the board makes a statement, we're not bound by that statement as a board. And basically, we have to, any kind of legal action, we have to be in session as a board together. We cannot act separately. And.
Exactly. Thank you. I think in one of the policies, I don't know, it may be that one in particular, that talks about us being a board corporate, that we're one body and we must be in session, as it says, in order to take action.
Board of Education is a body of.
Thank you. Anything else you want to comment on that? I looked at Policy 2.1200 Code of Ethics for School Board Members, and I think it was just at the last meeting that we signed the Code of Ethics, that we all signed it at the particular time, so we've had a chance to read it. I highlighted Section B, number two, about being, answering what is the objective of the board's policymaking decisions and that our objective is to provide students the opportunity of a sound, basic education after full discussion at public board meetings. And I thought there's some important things, important points in there that we're, again, looking for that basic, sound education for every student and that we want to have full and robust discussions about that. We want to see every side and hear from different parties about that and that we do it in public meetings, again, that transparency. I also looked at number three in that policy about, on what should all decisions be based? And it says that we base our decisions, we must base our decisions on the available facts and independent judgment, that we don't surrender our judgment as a board to the judgment of other individuals or of special interest groups, that we decide as a board because we have the most information and we know, we know the most. We try to share that with the public, the public, we give them opportunities to share with us, but that we don't surrender our judgment and the facts that we operate under to individuals or special interest groups. And there was one more part to that in 2.1200, what does a school board's member, when we signed that Code of Ethics last month, what did that affirm? And it, your signature meant that you read that Code of Ethics and that you're committed to keeping the, that Code of Ethics as terms of our Board of Education policy. Do you have any comments on the Code of Ethics? Number six is Policy 2.2200, the Official School Spokesperson, and I ask David if he would take that.
I sure will. According to the Policy 2.2200, it asks who are the only two people or their designee who can serve as a spokesperson for the school district. In that search, I found that the school superintendent or his or her designee or the board chair or his and her designee. Second part was whose position is the spokesperson to communicate and that would be to the position of the school.
Rather than individuals, isn't it? It's by the school board. And again, and I think the one that Mr. Sattlemeyer did, we talked about, that we represent the district, we represent the best interests of the district whenever we do speak and the best interests of the district and the community. Thank you. And finally, in Policy 2.3200, Open Meetings Law, Section A, Clayton, I think you've got it.
Yes, Dr. Barnett. And in that policy, it stated what are the four groups included in public bodies? And those are the board, any committees of the board, school improvement teams, and as defined by law, any other committee of two or more members that exercise or is authorized to exercise legislative policymaking, administrative or advisory function unless the committee or group is solely comprised of just professional staff. And the second part of that policy, Section B of Policy 2.3200, who is the secretary to the board? And that would be the superintendent.
Yes. So who is Debbie Wetzel? If he's, if Dr. Stover's legally our secretary, what's Debbie?
He's the board secretary.
Yes. Now, sometimes it's easy to get those two mixed up. I think Dr. Stover kind of designates that to Debbie anyway, is the work of his assistant, administrative assistant. Any other comments on the policies that we've looked at? Thank you for taking time to do that and I really recommend that we spend some more time going into our policies. I know we have a chance when Ms. Davis goes over some, but that's when we're looking to change and it's usually specific and jumps around, but I really think we need to take more time to look at our own policies and be familiar with them. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That was a very good little exercise there. Next up is consideration of a 2026-2027 draft calendar for Katama County Schools presented by Ms. Ray Thompson.
Good evening, Chair, Chairman Sattlemeyer, members of the board, Dr. Stover. So when we were together in February, I brought to you an example of what 26-27 calendar might look like. And you asked me to bring back to you some different options where you could easily see traditional start, traditional spring break, traditional start with a separate spring break because spring break is so early in the year 2027, which sounds so far away, but really isn't that far. And then, and two early, three-day early start options, one with a traditional spring break and one with a separate spring break. So you have in new board, Section Three, those four separate calendars. And you can see pretty clearly, I tried to make sure that the colors were bright enough for you to really tell where those breaks were. Again, number one starts on August 24th and has spring break in March and the first two days of April where it traditionally would fall tied to the Good Friday federal holiday. Number two has the August 24th start, but adds a workday on March the 29th to pair with the Good Friday federal holiday and move spring break to a separate week in April. When spring break is early, we go eight weeks straight without really much break, which is sometimes strenuous in the spring for students and staff. The third calendar starts August the 19th, which would allow for a three-day early start, has an extra workday October 15th, and then Calendar Three keeps the spring break paired with the Good Friday federal holiday. And then the fourth calendar splits that spring break to April the 12th through the 16th. So I bring these for you this evening for some discussion and consideration. Again, the three-day early start, starting on August the 19th, would not comply with our calendar legislation as calendars one and two, starting on August 24th, would. Any questions you have for me about these?
We don't have, Ms. Thompson, any survey information from staff or parents about any preference with these. They have not been surveyed on either of these.
I did share them with principals at our K-12 just so that they could lay eyes on them. Really, the survey information that we received on our calendar for 25-26, because we provided a five-day early start as well as the traditional start, many parents and staff said if we had a year's advance notice, this would be much easier to do than if we started in August this year. So that was some of the primary feedback about starting a few days early.
That was our reason for doing this tonight, to look at these, I understand. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So I've talked to some teachers and they really concerned this year about this kind of stopping and starting we've been doing since it seems like we got back from Christmas, really, with weather and things like that. I didn't know if they would rather have spring break along with Good Friday or if they'd rather split it like it is here. Then we run into that, you seem to have a good start going, but then you stop again for a week and then you pick back up. But it seems like a good place to stop to get recharged right before the end of the year, there where you have it. But I didn't know if you had heard anything from, what you just said you had it at the principals, what did they, they have any positive or negative feedback on?
They, they, they didn't have a strong feeling either way. The, having spring break split breaks up that last quarter just a little bit. But we can also, the Calendar One and Calendar Three, where we have spring break tied to the Good Friday holiday, does have an extra workday at the end of April to kind of break that up just a little bit to give folks some time to finish up those lesson plans for
Chairman Sattlemeyer, members of the board, as we speak about calendars with our administration and educators in general, I would dare say the consensus is the need for instructional time between weather or the need to plan in between sessions. I know that maybe to the general public that may seem like you can plan four or five weeks of lessons in one day, but it's simply impossible. So you also have to have planning time in there as well, but we really need instructional time. We're down to 171 or 72 instructional days and that is not a lot. And so just from the superintendent and our administration, we would value any additional instructional time that we could get and also include as spread out of the calendars we can so our teachers and students do have time to work the lesson plans, study and be prepared, but also at the same time getting a routine, too. So I think we can do that every three to four weeks, but those two things are essential, instructional time and planning time for our students and staff. Thank you.
I approve the calendar, but I think we take a lot of intake from you all of what y'all think is best, you know, that works for the best, for the students and for staff and for everyone. So that's what I base my thoughts on, is what y'all consider to be the best calendar year for the school system. So I just, my decision is whatever y'all feel is best is basically what I'm saying. I, you know, y'all going to be working it, you know, and I support you in that, but other than that.
And I can certainly share these with staff to get additional feedback if you would like. The nice thing about beginning to look at that two-year span for calendars, it gives you a lot of time to really think and make the choices that you feel are right for the
I guess my biggest concern is the spring break deal. Let's, I guess let's find out if our educators would rather do it with Good Friday or in the middle of April.
All right, sir. I'll be glad to.
I know middle of April will be warmer weather, enjoy it better then, but then again, you, once you get to the end of the year, you're in a kind of a sprint to get EOGs done, graduations and all those other things that are very important to people as well. So if we could, we could find out what people think of the spring break would be my big thing.
Yes, sir. I will do that and I'll bring you back that information at our next meeting.
Next up is Mr. Dan Moore. And Mr. Moore, if you don't mind, you have five things on here. If you just want to, it's all right with the rest of the board, if he just goes through all of them and then we can ask questions about them individually or as a group if we like and then we'll just, we'll vote them all at once if that, that suits you, Mr. Moore.
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you, Chairman Sattlemeyer and members of the board, Dr. Stover. Our first item is a quote from Southern Lock and Supply for District-Wide Security Supplies. This is secured through state contract. These funds are from the North Carolina Center for Safer Schools grant and quote, "For these supplies is $66,182.58." Our second is a proposal for intercom system replacements at Balls Creek Elementary School. We received three bids for this project. The apparent low bidder is B&amp;L Telephone at the amount of $56,560.14. These funds would be from Capital Outlay, specifically titled Telephone and Intercom. There is a one-year warranty for parts and labor for this intercom system. The next item, being a proposal of the same type for St. Stevens Elementary School, an intercom system in the amount of $56,560.14, again, through a receipt of bids, B&amp;L Telephone or, excuse me, B&amp;L Communications. These also are Capital Outlay Funds, specifically Telephone and Intercom, one-year parts and labor. Next item is a proposal from Johnson Controls for Fire Alarm System Upgrades at Balls Creek Elementary School. These are found from Capital Outlay Funds, specific line item being fire alarms, one-year parts and labor warranty. Last item being a proposal from Train for HVAC equipment at Balls Creek Elementary School through our OMNI purchasing agreement, Capital Outlay Funds, specifically HVAC. Capital Outlay Funds, specifically HVAC. The amount is $82,791.4. The warranties are much the same as they were for equipment that we purchased for Claremont and Maiden Middle. One-year parts and labor, three-year parts, coils and controls, five years for compressor parts only. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about these five items. I'm sorry. One, two, three, four, there are five. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. And I have went through all of those items.
We use B&amp;L Telephone for other things, I believe?
Yes, sir.
They've always done us pretty good.
We've had good service from B&amp;L. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any further questions for Mr. Moore on section number four here? For the, any of the quotes in that section? If not, I look for a motion and a second.
Make a motion, we approve.
I second.
I've heard a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for approval for the quote from Southern Lock and Supply, and the proposal for intercom system replacements at Balls Creek and St. Stevens Elementary Schools. Proposal from Johnson Controls for Fire Alarm System Upgrades at Balls Creek Elementary School. And for the Train HVAC Equipment for Balls Creek Elementary School. So I need a raised hand for approval. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. I appreciate that. A lot of good people working behind the scenes to put that together.
Okay, number five, under Business Approval of Bid Sum支 for Cobb County Schools Construction, of Maintenance Department, Dan Moore, on renovation of preschool classroom at Balls Creek Elementary School.
Yes, sir. Chairman Sattlemeyer, members of the board, Dr. Stover. This has been something that we've been working for a couple of years, and now we've been able, through last year's appropriation, to get the funds available. Renovate the pre-K wing. This totals $384,540. The apparent low bidder is Moss-Marlow Construction. This is also from Capital Outlay Funds, and there's a one-year general contractor's warranty with regard to this renovation. We had some termite damage there over time. Going to replace HVAC units as well. You just saw that price. And this is to renovate that, that space at that location.
Okay, you've heard Mr. Dan Moore talk about renovations of preschool classrooms at Balls Creek Elementary. Is there, I seek a motion and a second for approval?
Seek motion for approval.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I need a raised hand for approval of renovations of Principal's House at Balls Creek Elementary School, and that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Next up are HVAC renovations at Claremont Elementary School and Maiden Middle School.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that. So our first, Chairman Sattlemeyer, members of the board, is the installation of HVAC systems at Claremont Elementary School. The apparent low bidder is Moss-Marlow in the amount of $1,069,000. These are also Capital Outlay Funds with a one-year general contractor's warranty. And at our last meeting, we approved the purchase of that, of those units, so that we could take advantage of a discount. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about this particular project.
Do we approve buying the equipment last time, and this is for putting it in and doing the work associated with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The amount that we approved last time is folded into this quote. They assume responsibility to pay that quote and complete the work, but it allows us to get the discount.
I seek an approval for the HVAC renovations for Claremont Elementary School only in this, this motion?
Make a motion for the new HVAC system for Claremont Elementary.
I'll second.
Hearing a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? A raised hand for approval for Claremont Elementary School HVAC renovations? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Next up will be HVAC renovations for Maiden Middle School.
Yes, Chairman Sattlemeyer, members of the board, Dr. Stover. This one requires a request of County Commission to reallocate some dollars, actually redistribute dollars from different pots, to be able to secure the funding to complete this project. The apparent low bidder is DDI of Hickory at $4,550,000. This project includes a lot of things to work toward the renovation of that facility. So there's a purchase of 66 mechanical units with control system, new electrical service, new gas piping, a new gas service for the school. 20,000 square feet of this building, you had opportunity to tour last week. Will also receive new suspended ceilings and lighting. This is in areas in which the building has existing spined ceiling. The exposed hydronic piping will be removed, and following the demolition, masonry walls will be repaired. It will also include a new security vestibule. Maiden Middle School is one of two schools in Catawba County that does not have a security vestibule. The other will be remedied when C-Rac moves to the east campus. That will be the last school that will have a security vestibule. This will include a full corridor width ramp and create handicap accessible entry at the main entrance of that school. It'll also incorporate new entrance doors and storefront windows. We'll also have a new voice evacuation fire alarm system that's required by code. We'll also have underground routing for conduit. It'll accommodate future additions and renovations. Current fire alarm system's not repairable or expandable, and so this HVAC system requires this new component. We'll also include new copper supply piping to be installed above ceiling to prepare for renovation and expansion. It also takes into consideration an anticipated new meter location expressed by the town of Maiden. Will also include installation of a new cable tray throughout the 100, 200, and 300 hallways for low voltage cabling. It will not only support for this project, but for future expansion and renovation as well. So it's not just an HVAC bid, all that to say. There's a lot involved. That building requires quite a bit of work. This takes care of comfort for that building. Last summer, we were able to put a new roof on that building. It'll go a long way to help and make that a warm, safe, and dry environment for those children, and also prepare us for the renovation and expansion we hope to come soon at that location. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. We will... No, I'm, I'm sorry, and I'm, thank you for bringing that up. We are not proposing Alt. 1. Alt. 4 would only come about if the commission did not allow us to transfer funds that has already been allocated to Catawba County School System to meet the need for this project. And that will be a formal request that Dr. Stover will make. That is correct. The, the difficulty there, though, Attorney Davis, will be if, in fact, Alt. 4 is the direction we have to go, it will be to another bidder, and that would have to be decided at the next board meeting. So it's an omission. If you look at Neil Grading and Construction, they will actually become the low bidder if that funding switch does not occur. We would have to punt and go back to Alt. 4, which means that we'll only take care of the gym, chorus, and the, that is a negative, yes. No, I think what we have to do, in my opinion, and in my discussion with Dr. Stover, we've created a memorandum, that if the board approves this request contingent upon the approval of the commission to reallocate funding of that, we would move forward with that request next Monday at the subcommittee meeting, and then the subsequent commission meeting that following Monday. If that doesn't come to fruition, then we will come back to you to seek approval with Alt. 4 is what it would end up being. Previously allocated, this money that we have, we just have to ask for pots to be redistributed to this particular... DDI. Yes. I think we've got to determine, there's a couple of things that we have to determine. If that doesn't occur, then we have to take a look at what are we going to do. That would include taking care of the gym, band chorus room, and that encore hallway. That's all that we would be able to take care of because of the amount of work that's required in that main building.
Approve it, we need, if they don't approve it, we need to kind of start back over and...
Well, it will be the same bid. We could go ahead and say that the apparent bidder would be Neil Construction if funding is not allocated or redistributed. So what I'm asking for approval is the entire scope of the project that I just read, DDI of Hickory at $4,550,000, based upon, or contingent upon, Catawba County Commission allowing us to reallocate funding for this purpose. So, so if the funding, if, if the plan that we have, if they say, no, we're not going to allow you to move this funding, which typically they do, they allow us to graciously put it where the need is. If for some reason they say no, then we would come back, because the apparent low bidder would be Neil Grading, because we would only choose to do Alt. 4. We would omit all of the work in the 100, 200, and 300 numbered spaces. We would only take care of the gym, band chorus room, and the encore hallway. That's all we would take care of this year. I'm sorry. Does anyone? I don't know how... Because it was an alternate in the bid pack, and it's listed there, and that, I mean, I don't, I'm not sure I understand what you're asking. So what we did is, we bid this before all the square D equipment. We bid it with the roofer that placed the roof on the building last year, providing oversight to make sure that there were any issues, and it would be mitigated appropriately. That's Alt. 1. Alt. 3 is Johnson Controls, Semplex Fire Alarm. And the last alternate is, we can't do the whole project unless we receive the funds. We don't receive the funds, the funds that we have available already earmarked, and take care of the gym, band chorus room, and the encore hallway. And that's all we would have, because we can't, the project is large, it's messy, it's all the old buildings, new buildings, crossing over, electrical service, there's just a lot of mess. And the only way to carve it out is to either do it all at once, or say there's not going to be any part of the main building, and we're going to put this down.
Have we used DDI for other things? We have never used DDI? Have we got references from other people that's used those guys? And you're right, that is a lot of work to, to put under this, and I'm glad. Hopefully, we can get the funding from the commission to do this, because the security vestibule's definitely needed, and those other things are definitely needed at Maiden Middle.
Or I'm not sure I'm clear on, if, if the county commissioners wouldn't allow us to redistribute the funds, how would we be able to afford Neil Grading?
There would be a DDA of 2.8 million dollars.
Right, and that's enough that we'd have? Okay. It must be pretty close, what funding we need, then. Or what do we need distributed, redistributed?
I've got it in a memo.
I see there's, would be 2,000, 2,810 less, but...
We've got $768,000 in a 423 code.
So it's pretty close.
That in our last budget meeting, they asked us to identify something and get that paid down. So we're providing them with something.
So if we... So if they don't approve the redistribution, we would be able to do Neil Grading?
Yes, ma'am.
I understand. Thank you.
And our hope is that they will allow this because, quite honestly, cost escalation is only going to continue. So we're hopeful that we will be able to use these funds and pay for this project in its entirety.
So I would like to see an approval tonight of this so we can go ahead, at least if they decide they can move the money or will allow us to, that we can go ahead and get started.
Yes.
So hopefully, we can get this done. What's a timeframe to have this completed?
Well, it's going to be long. We're going to try to attack it as soon as school ends. We do have built within this contract, within this agreement, there are liquidated then to be done. We should call us down to push through subs to make sure that the work is done so that there won't be lost funds. And we're able to DDA from the amount, basically pay a fine every day not complete. But it's going to go into the fall. It's a lot of work. And we're going to have to utilize, went through the other day, you saw those porticoes in that building. We're going to have to continue to utilize porticoes in that building until all areas are ready. We're hopeful that by November or thereabouts, we'll be done with the majority of the property. That's what we're hoping for. When we get the heating season, because they can set the pace back here, we can have air, and they can work on the pipe and the gas pipe and be able to provide heat when heat is seasonally. The methods of math.
Any other questions for Mr. Moore on this project?
It is not.
Okay, so I'm seeking, oh, go ahead. I'm seeking a motion to approve DDI of Hickory for the base bid amount of $4,550,000 contingent that our county commissioners will allow us to move monies around to fund this project. So I'll need a motion and a second on that.
I make a motion.
A second.
Hearing a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I seek approval of raised hands. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Now work your magic and get that money moved around for us.
I'm doing my best.
Next up, approval of proposed amendments to Catawba County Board of Education policies presented by Ms. Crystal Davis.
Thank you, and so these are proposed changes from North Carolina School Board Association. Also, the majority of this is reorganization of the actual policy. And I'm going to jump to the middle of it first so you can understand. If you will look on page two, which is the new labeled Paragraph C, all of that is deleted. That doesn't mean we deleted it from the policy. It simply moved over to the new subparagraph D, school-related activities. So that looks like a major, major, major change, but it's not. I had to strike through it just so you could, so we could put it in a different subparagraph D so that you would see all the changes. The proposed changes have been reviewed by Lee Miller and Amy Siggman, who is our district data manager. Okay, I was going to say coordinator, district data manager. And so they had some questions, and also when we communicated back and forth over those. I updated legal references and policy references. You can see that there's some language that's insignificant in terms of substantive changes. It just makes things read better. There's a mandate in the first and the second paragraph that school administrators shall communicate attendance expectation to parents and guardians. They do that anyway. We're just making it, putting it in writing. There is, with regard to the main paragraph, subparagraph A, as far as attendance records. There is a clarification about students being considered in attendance if present at least half of the instructional day onsite in the school or at a place other than the school attending unauthorized school-related activity. The second section, the red section of subparagraph A, is to deal with remote learning, or remote instruction days, excuse me. That was really, started during COVID. It was not in policy. And this is actually what's been taking place. It's a matter of just putting it in writing at this point. Late arrivals, tardies, and early departures was also in a different place, and this is more fleshed out with mandates regarding what happens when a student is late, and it coincides with the excused absences policies regarding having a written excuse by a parent to have an excused tardy as well. And ties it into tardies and early departures being excused for the same reasons listed in the new subparagraph C. Again, excused absences, that particular policy under C was reviewed by by Ms. Siggman and Mr. Miller. The significance is that we want to make sure that any excused absences when that information and data is taken by the teachers in whatever homering class they're in, that's communicated to the data managers. So there's specific language in there. What was added, you can see on page three, subparagraph two, an excused absence is also isolation ordered by the local health. That's directly because of COVID as an addition. And then in paragraph nine, of course, number five is the same, it's the same topic. Attendance at a proceeding of a court administrative tribunal can be an excused absence. Number nine is reworded so that a minimum of two days each academic year for visitation with the student's parents can be excused if the legal guardian is in active duty and has been called to duty or is only from deployment. That is a legal requirement set statutory, so we don't have an option with that. It's just made absolutely clear. D looks like it's a big change, but it's simply the moving of that section from C over to D. Make-up work is clarified, and it's pursuant to statute, and it coincides with the Code of Student Conduct. Unexcused absences, there's requirements within the statutes that require administration to notify parents of unexcused absences under 115(c)(378) for excessive absences and unexcused. In addition, it makes clear, even though it's in another policy, the Code of Student Conduct, makes clear that excused and unexcused absences will be consistent with the Code of Student Conduct. For example, if you've been suspended out of school for a day or more, then that would be an unexcused absence. Excessive absences are clarified. Special circumstances are literally just notices of other special circumstances that exist by statute. It's just pretty much a cross-reference within the body of this because, as you can see, each one of those, one through three, usually cites, other than the no penalties will be imposed, perhaps this is due to documented chronic health problems, the other ones reference other board policies. For example, homelessness, the administration takes those into considerations as set out in those policies and state law. And then the final change is high school students and grading. That has been, it needed to be updated because the school system originally did this in the school year 2018-19. So we struck that year out, and Mr. Miller concurred that this would remain as the applicable rule with regard to students and grading. And then number two would be removed because that's no longer relevant or used. In addition, there was an administrative policy on final exam exemption that is no longer applicable. It was just hanging in there, hanging around from a previous time period that we actually found. So we're just letting you know that that's being deleted. Are there any questions about the attendance changes in the attendance policy?
Yes, I have a question. Okay, so for the high school, it says that students can't miss more than eight days per semester. What about the lower grades? Is there a limit on the lower grades is what they can miss?
That was my question as well. I thought Ms. Story presented to us some suggestions from principals. It may even be before the new members of the board were seated that they accept only 10 days of parent notes. I was surprised that wasn't added. Maybe that's what you're referring to, Ms. T. I thought we had intended to add that.
Well, there was a presentation, again, I think that was the result. I can't remember exactly, but I remember that Ms. Laurachelle had a question and presented at a meeting about attendance matters. And again, I don't remember exactly what the subject of her, what she mentioned at the board meeting. I know I did email her afterwards and say that there was an attendance policy and encouraged her to review it. I do have that email.
I was thinking of Mitzi Story. Mitzi presented to us.
Right after that, Mitzi, and I think Stephen Westmoreland, did you present on it?
I know they were asking, they wanted a number because they said that they kind of did it case by case, but they wanted a number that we could put in there. The policy, I think, is what they were looking for guidance.
And that's why I sent this to Mr. Miller because I don't know the outcome of that. I don't. I just...
Do we need to add that to this policy before we approve it?
I think it'd probably be best because it sounds to me like they were relaxing the attendance issue. I thought they were relaxing. If you're saying we're not... Yeah. Okay, because I didn't have it. Yeah, could we just keep those noted, look at them, and I'll just...
Table this until we have a chance to have that added and wording.
All that's included, so correct.
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you. So we do a motion to table this.
I make a motion to table this policy until we decide or get further action on the absence.
Are you also making a motion for the deletion of Administrative Procedure 4.200 AP?
That's super. You almost have to approve that.
It's been deleted, okay. All right, so the motion's been made to table the 4.200 attendance policy on the basis of a discussion we had about middle and elementary schools' attendances, and this will be brought back up next month possibly. I need a motion and a second for that.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second is a further discussion. I seek approval, raised a hand for 4.200 attendance to be tabled. That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Now I seek a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privileges and personnel issues. When we go into close, also a motion to take a break as we go into closed session.
I make a motion to go into closed session and have a five-minute break.
Hearing a motion and a session, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I look for a raise of hand. That is unanimous to go into closed session with a five-minute break.
One is, uh, I need a motion to add consideration of possible approval of letter of opinion regarding power school. And the other one is a H1B sponsor for two staff members. Motion and a second.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Are we considering those two together?
Just to be added to the agenda.
Okay.
Can you add it to the agenda?
Okay.
Yes, just to be added to the agenda at this point.
The reason I was asking is because I had suggested that we table the letter until next month. We just received it Saturday morning and then tonight we got some updates and have not had a chance to look at it.
I think that the attorney reading through it and the, um, changes she made seem to cover any questions that I had on the letter.
Could we at least separate the two as being added to the agenda?
Yes ma'am, we can.
Thank you.
All right, I would like a motion to, one, add consideration of possible approval of letter regarding power school.
That motion. Second.
All those in favor, I'm sorry, if I had a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a raised hand for approval. And that's all but one. All those opposed? Barnett, Dr. Barnett, my apologies. The second addition to the agenda tonight would be the H1B sponsor for two current staff members.
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
All those in favor, raise a hand. That is unanimous. All right, we talked about the letter regarding power school and changes that needed to be made. Uh, I guess I'm going to seek an approval to accept the letter as changed by our attorney. And remove the sentence, um... It states the following items are ones in which our board urges the ideal... I seek a motion on that for approval.
My motion.
A second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Have a question about will the letter be made available to the public? Will someone from the public receive it or get a copy? Uh, Ms. Wetzel? Yeah.
And I didn't mention this in the motion, so we may do the, redo the motion, but have it ready to be signed on one of our special call meetings come in April.
We were wanting the whole board to sign up. We was wanting the whole board to sign up. So it'd hold more weight, so everybody could sign up from our board. Yeah, so we can just, is that okay if we just wait and just sign up whenever we come back? Well, yeah, whenever. Hi.
Okay, our second added item was the H1B sponsor for two staff members. Uh, so the motion would read to hire the Heather Darman, the Darman of Savarment Immigration Law, 400 West Weaver Street, Carboro, North Carolina, 27510, to apply for top county schools to become an H1B sponsor for two current staff members, Vanessa Ramos and Luisa Kappa. Dooley, represent these two staff members to become beneficiaries of the H1B visa sponsorship, pay for the application fees and attorney fees to allow the employees to pay for an expedited processing fee. I need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
I've heard a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise a hand. That's six. All those opposed? Two, I'm sorry, it was five and two. Opposed were Mullis and Go-4. Next on the agenda is approval of personnel recommendations. Would you all like to go ahead and do the approval of the amendam of personnel recommendations? All right, so I seek a motion for approval of personnel recommendations and approval of addendum to personnel recommendations.
Make a motion.
A second. A second.
Hearing a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise a hand. That's unanimous. That brings us to the end of our agenda. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hearing a motion and a second, all those in favor? And that is unanimous.